All right, thank you. Let's call the meeting to order at 7:33? 7:36? And the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held August 23rd.
Make a motion, we accept and approve the minutes from the irregular meeting of August 23rd, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. The next thing I'd like to do is ask if we have...
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Next thing, we have some guests here from DEEP and from Waste Zero to make a presentation about a grant that we've applied for. And we're granted, and they graciously have come to try and give us better information than I can do about how this program works. So I'd like to move them up to number four, so that they can leave.
Make a motion as we move item four to item number three.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is Waste Zero presentation. Kristen Brown from Waste Zero is here with your friend who I've forgotten your name, I'm sorry.
No.
No, no, okay. And online, she was not able to make it. But on the computer is Chelsea Han from DEEP. This is a DEEP program that Waste Zero is helping out with. And it's a DEEP grant that we've been awarded. So I'm going to ask Chelsea and Kristen to kind of take over and give us a presentation of what we can look forward to. And really, all this is for, is for the reduction of waste. So we can reduce how much garbage we're putting into the system.
So Chelsea's going to go first, and you're on slide one.
Wait, wait. Okay, are you going to want that, or Chelsea? I guess there.
Yeah. She'll talk, and you guys will listen.
Am I up now?
Yep.
Okay, great. It's a little bit hard to hear, folks. I apologize, I could not attend in person. I do intend to, you know, visit your lovely town to see this in process if you do decide to move forward, which I do hope you, I do hope you will. So my name's Chelsea Han. I'm part of the Sustainable Materials Management Group at Connecticut DEEP. And I'm one of the folks on the grant team. And this is a grant that was awarded to us through the legislature, and I'll talk a little bit about that. This is just a really brief overview. Kristen, Kristen Brown from Waste Zero is our consultant for this project. So she's going to talk about the nitty gritty, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well. And so I don't know if you're seeing my slides.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So yeah, I'm just going to talk sort of high level, you know, why we advocated to get this funding. So we're just going to talk about the Connecticut Waste Crisis. And then, as you all know, being part of MIRA still, especially for Deep River, this is really important to take advantage of. So in Connecticut and New England, we are running out of cost-effective options to getting rid of our trash. And most of our trash is burned at four waste-to-energy facilities. Generally, these facilities only last about 30 years. So we're, we're really in trouble here, being that our facilities are all over 30 years old. And as you probably know, MIRA shut down this past July. Additionally, a lot of our waste is going out of state. But our policy in Connecticut is to try to be self-reliant and try to manage our own trash. And in order to do that, we really are trying to figure out ways to reduce trash, which Kristen will talk about and which this program is designed to do. So yeah, the costs are really increasing for, for waste management and trash disposal. And so we're really excited about this funding in order to, to work on reducing our waste. And if you move to slide three, hopefully that's where you are. So, you know, recycling is a really key part of managing our waste. It's also the law in Connecticut, and recyclables cannot be mixed with trash. And we're hoping that these programs in the 18 towns and cities that are moving forward in this round of funding will really, you know, notice what they're recycling and look at the list, the what's in, what's out list. I know that my colleague Cheryl Baldwin is going to be coming to Deep River to do her what's in, what's out presentation. I unfortunately don't know when that's happening, but I know that she has been in touch with Angus and with Lenore to schedule that. So that should be coming soon. That's sort of part of our technical assistance on this grant project. Whether or not you move forward with it, she'll be coming, but we do hope that you do. And that will just be a clarification on, on how to recycle correctly. Because we don't want folks to be doing what we call wish cycling, which is, I think this is recyclable. It should be recyclable. And then putting it in the trash, that just causes contamination. And that means that whole load of recycling won't be recycled. So we can move on to the next slide. So like I said, the legislature passed a bill to provide us with funds, provide DEEP with funds for a municipal grant program, which is the first we've ever experienced. So you are all part of the very first wave of this really exciting grant program that we worked for many years to get funding for. So there are 18 cities and towns in the first round of funds. And those funds are going to be used for pilot programs to reduce trash and collect food scraps. And they can only be used for these pilot programs. And Deep River has been offered up to $104,500 for this food scrap collection pilot at the transfer station, which is amazing. It will be a year-long program, and Kristen will talk about the, you know, all the details there. But this is a really exciting opportunity for the town to be able to try something new, separating food scraps out, because food scraps are a resource, not trash. And, and, you know, reducing the amount that the town is paying for disposal. So we can move on to the next slide. This is a little bit more detail on your particular proposed pilot. So Kristen, like I said, will talk further about this. But the residents of Deep River will receive free bags for trash and free bags for food scraps. So instead of putting it all in one bag, you'll just be separating it out. And, and hopefully, a lot of your residents are composting and using land for, for that, so you can have better gardens in town. But yeah, so this grant, it's a pilot program. It's not establishing a permanent program. And there's no additional cost to the town. But yeah, you will actually be saving some money. So we're giving you up to $104,500 to try this and collect data and see how it works through your town. And if you like it, hopefully you'll keep, keep moving forward with it. I know a lot of other program, other transfer station programs that have, have this option are really happy to have this option. So I think that residents will like it, especially once you get used to separating the food scraps out of the trash, if they're already, if they're currently going in your trash. And yeah, we're going to collect some data. Kristen Brown from Waste Zero will collect some data to evaluate the effectiveness of the program. So that's, those are all my slides. And yeah, I apologize that I had a conflict this afternoon before, between when my workday ended and this meeting, so I couldn't make it down to Deep River. I'm up near Hartford, so it's almost an hour away. But, you know, we have, we have great technical assistance with, with Waste Zero. And this is a program our staff is really, really excited about. And I really personally think that this is going to be a great program in Deep River. Originally, it was proposed to cut back on the number of months. And I, I fought very, very much for it to be continued for a year. So I do hope that you vote to, to try it. And that's about it. I'm happy to take questions if you want, or we can move to Kristen's presentation. I do have to drop at seven, unfortunately.
Okay, okay. So I'll go quickly, but I probably won't make it by seven. So does anyone have a specific question for Chelsea from DEEP before I go through some more details?
Is there an email address to email questions to? I prefer not to ask right now.
Okay, good. Yeah, well, we'll make sure that we leave an email. Okay, thanks.
And you can certainly call the department or email us, and we're happy to take any questions and, and help in any way possible.
Where do the food scraps go after we drop them off at the transfer station?
So I'll go through that in my detail in just a minute. So if you can hold for the answer of that question, I'll, I'll go through it with you. Any other question?
The money that you said, have we already accepted that grant?
You haven't accepted it. So this is, tonight, you're going to decide whether you accept it and you try the program for a year, or whether you decide to pass on it, in which case we'll find somebody else on the list of people that applied. So that's, that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So, good?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll go through and sort of use the details of the program. So you can turn that off. And so, as Chelsea said, we've got, we are having a waste crisis. It's not just a Connecticut waste crisis. It really is a waste crisis across the U.S. So I'll give you a little bit of background on it. And basically, that's me in Stanford, Connecticut, back in 1963 when I was born. No, not quite. But our disposal habits have changed. The way that we dispose, where we dispose, all of that has changed significantly over the past, you know, several decades. We produced 65% less trash back in 1960. Today, our purchasing habits are different. I mean, think about COVID, you've got a lot of packages online. About 30% of the products in our landfills or in our waste stream today are still made up of packaging. Much of that is recyclable. And about 22% of what we throw away in the trash today, in residential trash, is our food scraps. In Connecticut, there are no more residential landfills remaining in the state to bury the trash. And as Chelsea mentioned, in Connecticut, you incinerate everything. So you burn the waste to create energy. And when you look at the hierarchy of what to do with trash, burning the waste for energy is a better use of that trash than just burying in a landfill, because you do recover some energy from it. And then you have, you've burned it down to where it's just a small amount of waste that then has to be buried in the landfill. So that was a really good step for Connecticut, to move to waste energy or incineration for the trash. However, as Chelsea mentioned, the average life for the good life of an incineration facility is about 30 years. All of the facilities, except one in the United States, all of them are over 30 years old. So only one in Florida is only 15 years old. So, so we have had a lot of trouble citing incineration. Nobody wants to have an incinerator in their town. So like, you know, if somebody came to Deep River and tried to incite an incinerator, it would be really difficult to move it forward. Same thing with landfills. So the capacity for managing this garbage is, continues to decrease. So something that all state governments, including Connecticut, have been focused on is a sort of a hierarchy of behavior change. So trying to manage these materials differently and think of them as resources instead of as, as garbage. So the first sort of step is prevention. So preventing the waste in the first place. Second is reducing it, you know, thinking about what you're using. Reusing it, bringing, you know, clothes, materials to the goodwill. If you do a home renovation project, on your bathroom and your sink and your faucet are in good shape, you know, taking that to the goodwill or dropping it off in Habitat for Humanity, instead of just throwing it, throwing it in the trash. It's become really, really easy to throw everything in the trash, and, and that's really what's happening. The recycling rate in Connecticut, the average right now, is somewhere around 22%. So we're not recycling nearly what we can. We're not moving those materials out of the waste stream and back into the supply stream. Part of managing the materials differently, and sort of something that's been happening in Europe and Asia for several decades now, is the idea of pulling food waste out of the system and turning food waste into a cleaner, green energy. The problem is, you know, how do you get that food waste out of the system? How do you incentivize residents to participate in that type of a program? So, there you go. Yeah, so the capacity in Connecticut isn't the only problem. So the capacity really across the U.S. is an issue. If you look at from New York State North, the gray line on top, it looks at the landfill capacity of all the New York State landfills. So you can see it drops off significantly in 2040. The blue line is all of New England landfills again. So again, we're out of landfill capacity for residential waste in 2041, unless we cite a new landfill someplace in New England, which could happen. But, you know, it's, it, there's limited chance. So as landfills have been closing, not nearly as many have been cited and opening. So if you look at the, the other chart next to that, that's from an EPA sort of website. And that looks at, the tall blue line represents 1990. You can't see the numbers very well. But in 1990, there were over 6,000 landfills in the U.S., and today, there's just over 1,000. So again, they're closing faster than they're opening, but yet we still continue to make garbage, and our population grows. Although this year, I hear our population didn't grow at all. So we had less growth. But because we have all this demand, we have no space to put it. The cost of the trash is going up. And as you can probably see from your budget, the MIRA facility just went offline. Your, your disposal prices are significantly higher than they used to be. And we expect that to only go up, because there's no more freed-up capacity to take all of this trash. So we're looking at ways to manage the waste differently. And that's what this grant is about. The good news is, most of what we do throw away is recyclable. The average home in, in Deep River throws about, throws away about 29 pounds of trash per week. So when you look at the breakdown, this is based on the average, you have about seven pounds of food scraps in your trash. You have about eight, five pounds of paper. You have some yard waste in there, plant waste, plastic metal. And if you look at sort of that dotted gray line, you know, based on EPA studies, as well as, you know, what other states have proven across the U.S., you can really reduce that number down to about 25%. So reduce it by 75%. About 75% of that material could be taken out, put in the recycling stream, put in a food waste stream, or recovered by, through donations or reuse or another avenue. So the good news is, most of what we do still throw away could be taken out of the waste stream. But we still have a little ways to go. The concept of turning your food waste into energy, again, is something a little bit newer in the United States. Connecticut does have one facility, it's called an anaerobic digester. And an anaerobic digester takes the food waste, and it's kind of like your stomach. So if you think about when you eat something, you get calories for energy. In a digester, the digester, the process lasts about 30 days. It's anaerobic, so there's no oxygen. It's an oxygen-free environment. The degradation takes place, methane gas is captured, and it's turned into energy. And it's a very clean process. There's no methane escapes. So you, you're able to capture all of the degrading food, all of those gases, and turn those into electricity, or renewable natural gas, or other forms of energy. And then the byproduct from that is the digestate. It's kind of like the human stomach. So there's digested, there's another product at the end there too. Well, there's a product here called digestate, which is actually a really nutrient-filled dark powder that can be mixed with leaves to make a really great compost. So like the, the top compost that you buy at a Home Depot, that's what you can make from combining this digestate with leaves. So by capturing the food scraps, you create energy, and you also create nutrient-filled fertilizer. So it's, it's a really great process, as long as you can find a pretty simple, cost-effective way to capture that food waste. So the, sort of the overall concept of the pilot, we did a really small pilot earlier this year in Meriden, Connecticut, with 1,000 homes, and we had 1,000 homes for four months. So not, not real long. But with all of those homes, they were asked to separate their food into a green bag and their waste into an orange trash bag. And then we looked at, we actually analyzed by household, you know, what was happening. And we do believe that, that most people, interestingly, in, we did many different surveys, but one of the surveys came back, 15% of the people were really, really reluctant to try the pilot. And at the end, out of those 15%, that was down to less than, less than 5% of the people, you know, didn't want to do it. The rest of them sort of converted and said that they liked, at once they got used to it, that they liked doing it. So as Chelsea mentioned, your grant is for about $105,000, so it's pretty significant. It's for a one-year pilot. This is just for residents that go to the transfer station. So if you have a subscription hauler, this particular pilot isn't for you. We have a couple other communities that were doing subscription hauler pilots, but you guys are just a, a transfer station pilot. So if you bring your materials to the transfer station, your waste and your recycling, you'll be part of this pilot. The, the way that the pilot will work is, the bags that go to the transfer station have to either be orange or green. You'll be given two orange bags per week for the pilot, and, and one green bag per week for the pilot. We'll show you a little bit more about how that works. But there shouldn't, there, there really isn't any extra cost to residents, and there's no extra cost to the town. All of the collection service, everything is paid for through the grant. So again, it's 12 months, so that's 52 weeks. It's a total of 104 orange 13-gallon trash bags. They're nice and heavy-duty, so they don't, it, it'll be nice in your car when you, when you're bringing it to the transfer station, because they're less likely to leak or tear. And then one green food waste bag per week, and that's an eight-gallon food scrap bag. And then you should just continue to recycle as you currently do. And the idea is to try to just fit all of your trash into those two orange bags. The average home in programs that do this use less than two bags a week. So two bags should be enough for everybody. If you need extra bags, they're going to be available. We're going to talk to the hardware store and to your main grocery store, so that you can purchase a few extra bags. And they'll be available in rolls of five, so it won't be an expensive purchase. And again, you'll have had, you know, 52, 104 free orange bags and 52 free bags. So you'll have, you won't have to buy trash bags for a while. So even if you have to buy a few of these bags to make it through to the end of the pilot, it still should be a savings to all the residents. But the goal is to try to fit into just those two bags each week. So just some questions, and then I'm going to go through sort of the frequently asked questions that I always get, and then we can talk a little bit more. So, so is this going to cost residents money? It won't really cost you any extra money, because you won't have to buy any garbage bags for most of the pilot. And if you do have to buy garbage bags though, it shouldn't be very many. It should be less than what you typically would have spent on garbage bags.
What is the capacity of the food scraps bag?
That's an eight-gallon bag.
An eight-gallon?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm going to sort of show you a picture of what it looks like in a bucket. Most people will be able to fit into the eight-gallon bag. Again, if you need any extra green bags toward the end of the pilot, they'll also be available at those two locations. I think for around 25 cents a piece, so it's not a huge expense. If you need extra, again, you didn't have to pay anything for the initial bag. So we believe everyone will save, save probably in the neighborhood of $30 or $40 a year, because you don't have to get any garbage bags.
No, well, what I was questioning, the reason I asked the question is because if I have one in the house, I would like to put it into one of my...
Bins, yeah.
Bins.
Yeah.
And I would look, if it's something that's going to fit properly in the bin, and then when I fill it...
Yeah. So there, so I have a few ideas on how to do that in my last slide and sort of show some pictures. So we'll go back to that, and if I don't answer, we can go into more detail. Another question?
I was just curious if the bags also go to the digester, they're like compostable bags?
So the green bags go to the digester, and the green bags are debagged for your pilot. Some of the pilots are trying compostable bags. We're trying a little bit of everything in the 18 grant communities, but they'll be debagged at the digester. They have a depackager. Okay, so, next question. I already saw that. So will the town save money during the pilot year? So the answer to that is also yes. So you're gonna, you're going to get $104,000 in grant, but you'll also get some savings, because we would, we believe that the, the cost of disposal is going to be reduced. And then also the collection of your food scraps, that that program has a lower tipping fee than your current disposal cost. So again, part of the pilot is to really gain feedback from residents, to get your opinions about the pilot during the process. But also to gain data to see how much do you reduce by, and, and is this a program that you would want to make sustainable long-term? So the pilot is the idea of trying it. As we get closer to the end of the next full year, then you'll have to decide, is this something we want to keep doing or, or, or not? Maybe I should get all, all the way through, and then it might be, okay. So will residents save money in the future? And the answer really is yes, because the idea behind this is to reduce the trash. We think you'll reduce your trash. We, we believe the program will reduce trash around 70%. So it's going to be pretty significant. So we have other communities that we're using as model communities, so we think the trash will come down significantly. And so, yeah, so as, especially as tipping fees go up, the overall budget is going to come down. So it will be a savings in the future as well. And then what's the environmental impact? Well, according to Angus, there are 1,323 homes that use the transfer station and have transfer station permits. So using that as an example, based on the reductions that we think you'll get, it's equal to about 1,400 solar rooftop panels. So it's like a panel per household, so that's a significant impact. It's about 268, equal to 268 passenger vehicles off the road. So, you know, about close to 20% of the population taking a car off the road, or of the home. So, so it is a significant environmental benefit, and then obviously a cost savings. I don't know, it's not going to go. One more? So some quick logistical questions. So how do you get your free bags? So we're not sure of your start date. We're thinking it's going to be January 1st, sort of a New Year's resolution date, but we're not sure exactly of the date. But basically, the two weeks prior to the start of the program, there'll be people at the transfer station, like a, kind of like a Girl Scout cookie booth, set up with some people to talk about the program, to pass out the free bags. We'll make sure that each household gets their set of free bags. We'll be able to track by household and by the number of stickers sold. And, and there'll also be employees there that can help you download a mobile app. So again, the two things we want to get from this are the, the data based on weights of, of material that's coming in, but also resident feedback. So there'll be a mobile app that everyone can download. There's also an 800 number and an email, so if you don't like mobile apps. But you can basically provide feedback right when you leave. For instance, if you leave the transfer station and you had a thought, or if you're in your house and you think, oh, this is, this would be a good way to store the food waste, you can, you can provide us feedback, you can ask us questions, you can tell us you don't like it, or you can tell us you love it. You know, but the, the mobile app is designed to be able to track the messaging that's coming back from all the homes, so not just in your community, but in the 18 other communities as well. So you'll get bags, and you'll get information on the mobile app two weeks ahead of the program. And then is the pilot mandatory? Well, that's really what the meeting is about. What I say in pilots like this is, we really do get 90, 98, 99% compliance. Most people are willing to try it for the period of the pilot. So we're asking you to do the pilot. You know, are there going to be fines? Is anything bad going to happen to you if you don't do the pilot? No, because it's a pilot. You know, you'd have to decide in the future if it's something you want to keep doing. You know, is there some sort of penalty if somebody's not going to do it? Because that makes it not fair to the people that are doing it. But during the pilot, there is no, no penalties for not doing it. But we will track the number of users that aren't doing it. It won't be anything that's published, but we need to do that for the data, you know, so we can understand this, this home didn't do it, and they didn't do it the whole time. Or perhaps they don't do it, and they decide to try to do it. Or they start doing it, and then they don't want to do it. Like, we'll track all of that information. Yeah.
I was just curious for those of us that compost at home, are we being tracked?
No, no. It's great if you compost at home. Yeah, just use the orange bags. In fact, composting at home is the best thing you can do, because you're not transporting that material.
So you're not tracking the food scraps specifically?
No, not specifically. It's just, yeah. So, no. We may be tracking composting, but we will be tracking you at your dress. We'll just be saying, this many people are doing it.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, but it's better to keep composting if you're already, if you're already doing that, for sure. But this is good for if you're not composting your meat, or your bones, or cheeses, or dairy, or something else. You can use the bag for that. You can't put kitty litter in it, that's a, that's a question I get almost every time. But, but your typical stuff that you would have normally eaten can go in the bag. And if you don't typically put it in your yard, or even if it's, you know, temple o' zeri, and you don't feel like going outside, you can use your green bag, probably. So yeah, you don't have to separate the food scraps if you, if you don't want to. But we really ask that you try and at least participate in the orange bag program part of it, because the orange bag is really the, the thing that helps. We're hoping that that helps you to think twice about what you're throwing away. Because that, you know, if you just use those orange bags all year, and you don't have to buy any new bags, then you didn't have to buy any garbage bags at all. So it's a little bit of a... So it's a little bit of a savings for you, maybe forty or fifty bucks, not a whole lot, but it's a little savings. So we're hoping that that's an incentive enough for people to try to fit into those two bags and really think differently about what they throw away. So it's not mandatory, but we're really, Deep is asking you to participate, please. And, you know, if not, you know, it is what it is. So why is it important to use the orange and green bags? Again, we want to get feedback, we want to be able to get the right kind of data, so it's just important especially to, to participate if you can. And then last, the mobile app, we're gonna, it's pretty easy, there'll be a QR code that you can use, but we'll also be there to help you download it if you're not app savvy, which I'm personally not because I never know my iPhone, my password. So we're going to have young people to do that. And then what goes in my food bag? Then again, you know, anything that you would have eaten but didn't, didn't finish it or didn't eat it. It can be cooked food, it can be meats, you know, it can be bones, anything. And then lastly, this kind of goes to your question. Part of the data we want to collect is what, you know, what size bag is correct? You're getting an eight gallon bag, other people are getting a six gallon bag, and other people are getting a four gallon bag. So it's, this is a bit of an experiment, so we're trying to understand. But the eight gallon bag fits perfectly into a paint bucket with a lid. It fits perfectly into the tidy cat thing, you know, and then there's the, there are eight gallon, you know, pails at Home Depot and Walmart. The other thing that, well, we've got a couple of companies that in California where they're a little bit ahead of us when it comes to food waste composting, they're offering coupons. There's, I can't think of one, it's, it's like a try, it's like one for trash, one for food and one for recycling, it's, and you step on it. And they're giving a fifty percent off coupon to Connecticut residents. So, so there'll be, you know, if you want to buy something, you can. Again, it's a pilot, so you might not want to invest in that. But within the, the grant budget, we do have a little bit of room to give away some buckets, so we might look at purchasing some buckets that people could get here at Town Hall, or even selling some at cost at Town Hall, just if you want to get a special bucket if you don't have a bucket. But we'd love feedback on little, on ideas that you come up with at your home so that we can pass those on to other people. So tonight, really what we want to discuss is, is this, are you interested in trying this as a pilot for a year? And that's kind of your decision. I mean, we went through the grant writing process, you got approved, we like your idea, we like the methodology, so now it's kind of up to you whether as a town you think you want to give this a try. I guess we'll turn on the lights and we can answer some more questions.
Thank you very much. That was very informative and I think a good, good explanation. Are there any more questions?
I just thought, um, the orange bags are for general garbage. Is, so you're taking this food scrap to another facility, to the digester?
Mm-hmm, yes.
The orange bags, are you taking those also?
Those are still going to Mira or through, through your disposal contract. The idea is we're going to be measuring, so we're hoping that your waste is down significantly from last year, so, so you should see a savings.
So the orange bags are going to be measured separately from the general waste at the rest of the town that's not involved in the program or not?
Yes.
Okay, so let's say we do large projects in garages and things like that, and we have like five orange bags sometimes, that's the deal.
If you have five...
That's what you want us to do, so you can say, okay, here's...
And we're trying, yeah, so we're trying to, you know, measure and learn about behavior. So one week you might clean out your garage, but honestly, I moved, and I know I'm a little weird for sure, but I, when I moved, I had almost zero waste in my garage. We, I figured out where, my, now my kids hated me, but I said you had to bring that over there and you had to bring this here. And so when you think about it, you'll find that most, a lot of things you don't have to throw away. Even all the little nails and stuff, everything can be reused, so, but I'm a little strange.
How do you account for people who use trash pickup?
So in this particular pilot, the subscription hauler residents aren't part of that pilot. Now in Madison, Guilford, Woodbridge, some of the other towns are trying subscription pilots, but they're not trying transfer station pilots. So in the eighteen communities that were picked, we tried to pick all different types of communities to get, that will feed that.
So plastic doesn't go in that, that bag, does it?
So in your food waste bag, just food goes in, and in your garbage bag, just garbage goes in. So a lot of plastics are garbage, so yes, that, that goes into the, into the orange bag. So part of the learning here is, is we are going to give you, when you get your bags, you're going to get a listing of what's in, what's out, like Chelsea mentioned. You're, there's going to be some educational seminars, there are links, there's going to be a link, you'll get a website of your own, landing page on your, on, from your own website, town website, and there's a tool in there. So you can put in shoes, you know, and it'll say, oh, bring those to the Goodwill. You can put in, you can put in pretty much anything. And it'll give you an answer of where you could, how you could recycle or reuse it, or it'll tell you that it's trash. So some things, right, you know, currently are, are not recyclable, so that is still, that's garbage. Yeah.
That's a word, that's a wording, Chris. You said, we're, we're not used to generally doing that.
Right.
That you have to learn what is, what and where it goes and, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I did a presentation in West Haven, they voted to do this, and they're doing a town-wide program in West Haven, so seventeen, almost seventeen thousand homes will be doing it. It's curbside collection, it's two-color bags, but it's very similar. But, but at that meeting, I took the people, prior to the meeting, a bunch of people met in the office to get ready, and everybody was eating McDonald's, that was kind of the food of choice. So we actually took the McDonald's and we brought it down to zero waste, other than the ketchup, because the, the french fry packet is technically recyclable, the paper bag is recyclable, the box for the Big Mac and the Quarter Pounder were recyclable. The food waste went into the food waste bag, you know. We really didn't have a place to bring it, but it was a pretend exercise, so, yeah. But, but really, when you get down to it, a lot of the stuff that you currently throw away really is recyclable, you just need to think about it a little bit differently. And, and some of you already do that, and some of you won't even make a bag a week, you know, of trash, but others don't. So it's just, this is sort of a way of leveling the playing field and saying, this is kind of your allotment. Try to fit in that allotment, if you need a few more, then they'll be available.
How, how are the waste collection companies, are they, is, are they against it? Because is it their job to pick up all this stuff? Or are they embracing it? Because I'm, I have a pickup at home, so I wouldn't be in the program because I'm picked up. You would almost think that all waste or whatever might want to jump on board and start picking up orange bags and green bags and helping...
It kind of depends on who the hauler is. So some don't like it and others do like it, so kind of, it kind of depends, yeah.
Because it's kind of cutting into the business.
It's kind, it is, but it's kind of cutting edge, so it's get, you know, there are new opera, it's kind of like going back to the horse.
Well, I think it's a great idea, but I'm just saying there might be some feedback from some of the commercial collectors.
Yeah, it's just, we're running out of space to throw our garbage away.
Yeah, absolutely.
In the whole country, so really, at some point...
You gotta get on board.
You gotta figure it out. And I'm sure Waste Management that owns a great deal of those landfills, they're thrilled because right now, you, maybe they're not thrilled in fifty years, but, you know, they're ma, they're making a lot of money, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So our next step is to talk about whether we want to accept this grant. And from everything I've understood about this, this is a board selection decision. It's not, it's not a town meeting or a referendum vote, and, and that's, you've confirmed that.
Um, yeah, so I, I mean, it depends from town to town, but I think the town meeting vote in theory is at the end, after you start the pilot. Yeah, then you decide.
Whether you're going to keep going.
Whether you're going to keep going, whether, and, and part of the pilot process is, you know, we, we sort of divide it into three phases. We've got the implementation phase, which is like the learning phase, and then the data collection phase. And toward the end of that, we'll start talking about, okay, this, it looks like you had this much reduction, you had, you know, and then we'll start modeling what it could look like for you in the future, and then that's when you have to make a decision. This is something we're, we're...
No, the hundred and four thousand, is it be determined, been determined how the town will spend that in implementing this program?
Yeah, basically, it's a pretty tight budget.
People, a little, little booth, you know, all that, so that's all...
Good exercising right in. Kind of figure all that out. So, we got one more, go ahead.
So the board select will decide whether you want to proceed, but then it has to go to a town vote because we're the people that are going to be doing it.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about a little bit. At the end of the program, there's no question, it, we, the town needs to decide if we want to continue it or not. But because, and I, I think we're going to talk about that, whether we can, we want to make this decision tonight, or whether we want to push it to a town meeting and have a more of a conversation. But, but that, the idea is to get it started, we need to, to implement quite a bit about this. You're talking about where the money gets spent. Part of that is construction, we need to construct a place for the food waste collection to be taking place. And part of it's education. In January, while we think it's a long ways away, I was at Walmart the other day and the Christmas stuff is out, so it's coming quickly. So we need to make the decision relatively quickly. We don't need to make it tonight, but we need to make it very soon because they, they need to know if we're going to accept this grant money.
Yeah, just because we have a list and, like, there were thirty-six that applied, they picked thirteen, so there are others waiting on the list, so not, not pressuring you, but just, yeah, if you don't want to do it...
No, I'm, I'm pressuring us, because I think this is a really good program and I think we should do it. I, I think it's something that, that we, we need to do as a community anyway. And if Deep River can kind of be in the front of that charge, I, I think that would be great, we should, we should think about that.
Have any of the plans or any of the providers that were presented to us a couple months ago, when you and I were on the program, the Blue Water, Blue Wave?
Yeah.
Is there any other people that are going to pick up the food scraps or are they the only?
As far as I know right now, Blue Earth is the only group that is walk, that is driving around the state and picking things up.
How often will they pick up?
I think they come once or twice a week.
Yeah, twice a week.
Yeah. And, and, and there is, there is, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't analyze, so forgive me if this has already been asked, but is this food scrap, is that, is the collection at the, at our existing transfer stations?
Yes.
Because when you said we have to build a facility...
No, no, it's just a small, it's just a collection, a contained collection.
Where, where that stuff at the transfer station goes?
Oh, okay, at, at existing transport.
Now, now the region is working on trying to find a place that have to build an anaerobic digester, so that we can have one regionally, so that we don't have to pay Blue Earth to bring it all the way up to South Hurry or wherever they go.
Southern, yeah.
Southern, yeah. But until that happens, Blue Earth is really the only grant to get it up there. Now, they're already coming here to collect from Adams, they're, they're going to Essex, they're going to some other towns, but there, there are folks in town already that are participating in that program. We're, we're working, part of this program, we're hopeful that we can get the Deep River Elementary School involved. So the elementary school, all the food scraps from that are going to...
Local, local restaurants, how do they...
Well, for this program, the elementary school, we've got a little funding in for that, we don't have anything for, for restaurants. But it's kind of like anything else, it's a chicken and an egg.
Yeah, we got to start small.
We got to keep it going, and that's why the funding from the town really helps with volume, and then the Blue Earth people are in the area and it makes it easier. And even when you think about it, Blue Earth starts to give competitors because, you know, so eventually, but when it's, it is a chicken and egg, you got to get started before you...
And we have had some conversations with, with the local restaurants, and they're on board with having, with putting their stuff in Blue Earth, and when they come to town, they can go, they, they do household curbside pickup as well. So it is something that we think, and really we can do an awful lot to reduce the waste that comes out of Deep River.
And the Madison and Guilford pilot is a co-collection pilot. So for the people that are on subscription haul, it's only two, one hauler in each one that, that's, that are part of the pilot, but homes will be able to put their food in a green bag, trash in an orange bag, in the same cart, in the same truck, and then it's sorted with an optical eye. So the green bags go one way and the orange bags go in the other way. So like, you know, this is, this is more low, low, low-key because it's a transfer station, but, yeah, there's some high-tech stuff sort of being tested as well. But, but we hope that you do it because obviously you made it to the top eighteen, it's kind of like the American Idol, top ten, so, you know, yeah, so we hope you do it.
Okay. I, I think it's a great idea and that it's not costing us any money.
Right.
You know, when, when the program's over and if it's good, bad, indifferent, whatever, and then we assess what we want to do, I think that's when the, in my, I think that that's when the townspeople get involved and, and see if we carry it any further. But in the, in the meantime, take the hundred and four thousand dollars and, and, and...
Implement it.
Implement it and hopefully, hopefully it's viable.
And we get...
It's going to take, it's a lifestyle change for some people, because I'm sure some people destroy everything in a garbage bag and goes in, you know, and that's the education part.
Yeah, it is. We, for the four-month pilot in Meriden, and Meriden, you know, it was a pretty, a pretty rough area with multiple languages spoken, you know, we went and had to do a lot of door-to-door outreach. We had, in the end, it was sixty-four percent of the people really wanted to keep doing it. So, and that's, that was four months, and it was in a, it was in a difficult neighborhood, so I, so I, I feel like in the end, most people are going to like it. This is, just gives you a chance to give it a try.
Well, it'd be, it'd be good to give this time so you can give us, number one, we can see the numbers. How much are we saving by reducing the amount of tons that we have hauled out of the town?
Right.
And that, you know, that might be a wash because it costs money to bring the food waste out of town too, so it may be a wash, and then it becomes just an environmental...
And if it's a big start going through the roof or whatever, but it'll at least, it'll at least kind of offset some of that, so maybe the increases won't be as bad as they would have possibly been.
But at, at the end of that year, that's when we have to have a town meeting and say, we're going to, we're going to invest in this, or we're going to end the program.
And that's, I said enough to mean is I'm for it, I support it. My concern is at the end of the year, when the grant goes away, and now whatever the costs are, now we have to pay for the personnel that we hire. I just want to make sure that's...
No, no.
You don't actually hire anyone.
We're not hiring anyone.
You're not going to hire anyone?
No, they're, they're going to be there for education. We're hiring you, we're actually interviewing now, but that's just for, to manage the transfer station.
But the end of the year is where you're...
Not to manage this.
Yeah.
But that's going to be part of it, though.
It's part of the grant.
Yeah.
For folks to be there to help us with education and to monitor what's going in and out. Just, just to pay attention to it.
Yeah, so no employee, so in the grant, there's no specific funding for an employee for the town, it's just during the...
And I'm not, I'm not, we're not going to hire someone to manage the food scraps and this program. It's going to be the same people that are working our land, our transfer station already. I think that's what you're asking, right? We're going to hire additional people.
We're going to hire additional people for, to help out here?
No, that's not the intent. I don't think we need to.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, you shouldn't. We, I mean, there, there are several communities that are doing it in other parts of the country.
So, so once everybody's educated and the, and the, and the transfer station personnel are being educated also, you're saying that the end of the year, our existing transfer, transfer station personnel will be able to do everything with this without hiring additional people to keep it going?
Yeah.
I think that's what, yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and you'll be able to sort of watch that as you go. That's the good part about piloting it, is you get to, you get to see. And, and the transfer station employees will be able to say, oh no, this is a pain in the neck, I don't want to do it, or they'll be able to say, oh gosh, it's easy, you know, most people do it right, and we don't have to talk to, yeah. You'll get, that's part of the feedback. I mean.
Once the pilot program is done, is there gonna be an additional cost to the taxpayer? I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna do this program, I'll get free orange bags, I'll get free green bags, now the pilot program is over, what's my cost as, as a, as resident? So, once this program, once the grant is done and now we've decided, yes, we're gonna continue, what falls on me as a?
So as part of the process, again, so in the first part is implementation and education, the second part is, is the data collection. As we gather the data, we will be able to demonstrate, we believe, that you'll have significant savings. So in reality, you won't actually have additional costs, it should be a savings. But, you know, that's part of the data that we gather, and then that proposal is what will go to town meeting, or we'll have a couple of other meetings prior to that, so people can understand it. But in theory, this, when you reduce your trash by seventy percent, and your shipping fees are going up like that, this should be a, it should be a net savings, it should be a net savings target, I mean, that's what we.
But eventually, we, we as, as residents are gonna have to purchase those bags.
Yes.
You, you buy bags anyway. If, if you buy a drawstring bag and you put your garbage in now, so it's basically the same thing. That, that doesn't really change.
Well, you know.
It is the same, it is the same thing.
In your other, in your other pilot programs, did the people that you wanted to participate, did you talk to them? Did you meet with them? Did they say, yes, I want to?
So, I mean, yeah, well, we, we picked a thousand homes, the thousand homes that were on a specific route, and we talked to some people, but most people either weren't home, so we, we did surveys. That's all that we did, sort of put out surveys during the course of the four-month pilot, again, it was a short pilot. That's the reason we wanted to, to do the mobile app as part of this, so that you have the ability to download the app, it'll be able to tell you some things, you can ask questions. It might take a couple, you know, twenty-four hours to get a response back, it's not that, that, you know, high-tech, but, but it's a way for us to get feedback and get you answers. But we'll be able to measure how many people through that app come in and say, I hate this. I mean, that, that would be part of the data that you get to see going through it. But you'll also be able to see how many people say, I love it, it's easy, I want to do it, so that helps with the decision.
We're not gonna get any savings as a town, because I'm one of the people who thinks this is the dump. So I'm not going to be able to say I like it or I don't like it until the end of the year?
No, 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 throughout the whole pilot.
During the whole year.
During the whole year, you can comment on your, yeah.
You can say it's.
But I'm talking about, you don't intend to have any town meeting.
We're deciding that tonight.
Say this is going to be going on.
We haven't said that yet, Jane. We're, we're deciding that tonight, whether we make the decision to move forward tonight, or whether we make the decision to bring it to a town meeting, is what we're talking about.
Twenty-two percent of the waste will be.
Food.
Over to the food rather than directly into our transfer, so we should be hauling twenty-two percent less of transfer material.
Yeah, in fact, probably less than that.
So, question is, is the cost of that twenty-two percent of food scrap, what is the cost to transport that out of here compared to twenty-two percent if you had it in just the general transfer container?
The transfer and disposal of the food should be a little bit less than the transfer.
And that's your net savings, period?
No, so you're also, because you're getting two orange bags, most people will try not to have to buy other bags, so most people will reduce their trash, and otherwise, whether it's.
Which means they're gonna move stuff over to the recycle bin, which does that cost us to remove? I'm just wondering, because it's gonna be the same.
So that's the good, that's the good thing about doing the pilot, is, is you can look at all your before costs and all of your after costs, and you can look at it on a monthly basis. So you'll be able to see the changes in the volumes, the changes in the costs, because you're right, there's, if one goes down, sometimes one goes up. But you do get some complete behavior change from doing this, in that you get more people home compost in their home, because they feel like, oh, I won't even use a green bag, I wanted to home compost, I'm gonna try that. And so then you're not carrying that material at all, so you've incentivized that change. You, you get more people donating to the goodwill, you get more people thinking twice about everything, you know. So if someone remodels their kitchen and they get a new toaster, but their old toaster worked, you know, it, it's kind of easy to throw it away.
Just bring it to the mill.
But, but now you can, now you, you know, think about, do I give it to my neighbor whose kid's going to college? I don't know, you do think differently. I mean, and so surveys that we do after this, we find it's really interesting how differently people think about their garbage. So that's why it's a pilot, because everybody has these doubts in the beginning, and then therefore they panic and don't do it. And that's why this is basically a free opportunity to try it, so that when you do actually go to a town meeting to vote on it, you, you have experience, and that's important, you have experience doing it.
You have the experience of the data.
Yeah, and the experience of the data and the personal experience, so, you know, of doing it, and, and what we do find.
And numbers, you have numbers.
You have numbers, you have personal, and you have personal feedback that's written down from an app that can, you know, track actual, you know, so it's.
I'm actually, I wouldn't be surprised if DEP, Chelsea's not very involved, ultimately, I would not be surprised if DEP doesn't push this on the towns anybody. So for us to get a good start on it prior to that happening, and already be doing it, is something that I think would be beneficial to us as well.
We've had many residents over the last forty-one years or so, I've lived here since I've been for, you know, recycle on our own from the dump. Where people will leave products out, that thing a flocking more, and we'd be able to bring them home. I have concerns about these, about the data, because we've done a good job of recycling these materials on our own. Most of the pots I've used for my plants have come from the dump, dressers, you know, stuff like that, building materials. I know it's great to donate things to places that, you know, have either a nonprofit organization they're supporting, or it goes to, you know, goodwill, stuff like that. But some items that you can't donate, and among construction materials. I'm very famous for pulling out two-by-fours, sheets of plywood, plastic bins, stuff like that. So I'm worried the data is gonna be kind of compromised, because we've been doing this for forty-one years that I know of, and all of a sudden it's now becoming a rule, or it's been a rule, but now it is now enforced that we are no longer doing this, we're no longer to take these items or leave them for others.
So you would still do the same thing, right? People can still, I don't know how.
No, right now, right now, the ordinance that created the landfill very clearly states that anything that goes in stays in. That's where we are right now. We're gonna look at some of the other surrounding towns, we've looked, I've already had a lot of conversations with some of the surrounding towns that have these.
Swap shop.
Swap shop things. While, in, in, in theory, they're, they're a great idea, almost to a T, they're still going into the dumpster just a week and a half later. The, the town crew now has an additional job of moving things from the tent into the dumpster. Now, it's very important that, that we remember that we are not allowed, even if we start that, we are not allowed to go into the dumpsters and pulling out two-by-fours and pulling out anything. Once it goes into the dumpster, it is in the dumpster. It is not allowed, it is not allowed to take it out of there.
But if it's been left along the wall, like it used to, we used to have items left along the wall. I'm not talking about diving into the dumpster, that's dangerous to get in one of those bins.
It is.
I would imagine that's really, really bad. I'm talking about stuff that had been left along the wall, dresser, stuff like that. I have two dressers, a bunch of two-by-fours and stuff that haven't been returned. I know a lot of residents, I've addressed this on What's Wrong with the Tri-Town Area page, a lot of response from residents that they're. One woman was getting stuff out of there for her classroom, so it is, it is disheartening to the residents that have been doing this. Maybe it's been a rule and a law, but it hasn't been followed by the majority of the residents here in DeBrer, so it would be nice.
I thought it may be right.
We had, it was, you know, it was, we were allowed to leave stuff out in front of the office and along the wall, and people would take it, it was really no extra work to the staff.
It was extra work to the staff, and it, and it is extra work.
It's just too bad that it was a great way to recycle.
Understand, thank you. That's important information, I appreciate it.
Well, then if we were to change the town ordinance, would it be allowed again?
I would imagine we're gonna have to take that back to a town meeting in order to put that shack up there, and that's what we're looking into. I don't, just, nothing's gonna happen right away, nothing's gonna happen next week, and we still, we're still trying to hire people to get in there to work the place. So we're, it's gonna take some time, but I imagine we're gonna get back to where everybody's happy is, can be.
I'm sorry, I just only brought that up because I was told by yourself, you know, a staff member, that that was not the case.
I never told you anything like that.
Yes, you did, in your office when I was mixing.
Okay.
Right after I got the dump.
I hear you. Anyone else? So it's up to you guys, we need to have a conversation about whether we go to a town meeting, or whether we make the decision tonight to do this. If we go to a town meeting, I'd like to do that within ten, you know, as soon as we can, Joyce is gonna have to get advertised and get that done, so we can get, let these folks know.
I'm, I'm fine with moving it forward myself.
Okay, then we'll take a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to move the acceptance of the hundred and four thousand five hundred dollar grant for the zero waste. On a pilot program.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Okay.
There we go, Chelsea, you're crystal.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, thank you.
That was a great job.
We're gonna leave the email address, I know somebody on, so I'll just.
I really look forward to, to learning more about recycling.
Yeah, yeah.
We are going to, we're going to do lots of that.
That's part of those grants, is the education.
Lots of education. All right, so we have a lot of people here tonight, so I'd like to move right on to, to audience of citizens, and then I'm gonna ask you if we could just go to the town meeting, we'll table it in the last item. It's not an emergency, it's just what we're gonna do with the money that we're already getting.
Yeah, actually, that, that's, that's why, hi, actually, here, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, are you guys doing this tonight or not?
I'm actually, I'd like to table it, it's just how, what we're gonna do with the money. You know, we're accepting money.
And how much is it?
It's fourteen hundred bucks a year.
Well, sure, shit not going to the cops, is what I'm thinking.
No, it's going to the tri-town, hopefully, that's what we're gonna.
So useless, too.
So we're gonna table that. Okay, we're gonna move on, we've got a town meeting scheduled for immediately following Allison, we're gonna table that so we can get to that. Okay, we'll get to it two weeks from now. Thank you, sorry you had to.
Thank you.
So, can we've got, audience of citizens that we can go through, Jane, go ahead.
I'm concerned about how the American Rescue money is to be distributed. As I understand it, if something like the food bank wants money, they make an application to you. And I want to know.
Would you like me to explain where we're at? It was actually going.
No, I would like to finish my statement.
Sorry, I was trying to. I apologize.
But I'll try to talk faster than you. I'm just really, talk too fast as a teacher. I want to know if all of the proposals that's come to you are then discussed with the other two selectmen, all of them.
Yeah, they have been thus far, and they will be.
I, all I heard was, was that one sheet that came out at one point.
Yeah, we were.
And nothing else has been.
That's correct. At this point.
Are you, was that a period?
I, I want to make sure that everything that you get is brought to the other two selectmen.
I understand.
And I want to say that I don't think it was a very good idea for it all to be resting on, as I told you after a town meeting, that it's basically resting on one pair of shoulders, and then it gets distributed to two without any other larger discussion. Because when larger discussions, when not a huge number of people, but when more people are involved, ideas come up. And that mutual discussion generates some very good ideas, and that is not happening in this town.
Well, we've gotten a number of applications. They were going to be on tonight's agenda, but I have one program that I'm working with, a fellow who took come in and worked with a grant program for businesses in town. He's done that in numerous towns around, around the state already, and it sounds, it was something that I was reluctant to do because of the management of that. But because it's a third party, I think it, it takes away any politics or any, any, any chance for any thought of discrimination. It, it's a third-party entity, and he's, we're working on putting that together. Once we have that, all of this will come to a selectmen's meeting, probably a special meeting, so that we can have a whole conversation with the community about each proposal. We'll talk about moving those proposals forward to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance will talk about them all again, we'll invite the folks in that have made applications to come in and support their application, or not, depending on what they want to do. And then we will move that from the Board of Finance to the town. The town will have ample opportunity to talk about the programs. We've got a number of good programs that have been, that have been, or requests that have come in, and we, that, that's the process that we're going to take file. And it is, from all of my experience speaking with communities around the state, it is, it is the vast majority of communities are working that way, and it's, it's the way that I think that it sounds like it's the most efficient way, and the best way to get everybody forward. So I appreciate your thoughts on it.
If I may just chime in, if I listen to what you're, should, what you're saying, Jane, is, are you asking that everyone that sends a request in, be funneled all to us, selectmen? Because the last time we had a meeting, we had a breakdown of six, eight, ten people. Are you talking that if there was maybe thirteen or fourteen people that sent in that didn't make that list, is that what you're asking?
I, I would like every request that comes in gets discussed openly at a Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah.
And this gets announced, every single one.
That's the intent. I don't know why you would think otherwise. But that's.
Because sometimes things have not been openly discussed, and I'm talking about applications, reports, admissions.
I don't understand that, but it's a good thought. Anyone else?
How are you? I, attend, is my second meeting I'm attending. I have a road out in front of my house that has issues. And I blew up some pictures and came to this meeting last week to discuss it, and it's beyond from two thousand and eighteen, I've been very nice about it. I've emailed pleasantly, I've written letters, I've taken pictures, there's nothing I can do to get this fixed. I am not able to shut down West Bridge Street, it's not in my right. I'm also not able to fix it, because that would be a liability. So I am being held captive. Now, it's what happens, is it shakes my house, it shakes my living room, all the buses go by there, no one does anything about the speed of any of it, which adds just a whole other factor. But it's not getting fixed. I have a stone foundation, the stones are coming out of my house, there's piles of dirt on the floor, I just want my road fixed. And I'm embarrassed that I have to come here and do this in this venue, and I apologize, and you guys have to listen to this just to get a road fixed, it's been a lot of years. And I'm really upset about it, and it's, and I'll tell you why, it's a quality of life issue, I have two homes here I pay taxes on, I don't put children to school, so you have plenty of funding to do it. Can you please schedule my road being fixed?
As soon as we left the last meeting, the next day, we spoke with the road crew.
Okay.
We're trying to fit, to get scheduled up there, we're trying to determine whether, how big of a patch we need to use.
Contacts, I need to, I need to follow up on this, so how I'm gonna come through meetings.
You can just call my office, call my office every day.
Doesn't work that way. Let's figure it out, how am I gonna?
Call my office.
And then, and who do I speak with?
You'll speak with Joyce or you'll speak with me. I'll send, I will give your information to Eric, so Eric is the foreman of the crew, he can talk to you. Trying to figure out the patch, how long the patch is gonna have to be, where it's gonna be, how, how it's gonna get done, I don't have his number.
What's his name?
Eric Walkey.
Walkey?
Yeah.
W A L K Y?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So who is Eric Walkey?
He's our, our highway department foreman.
Okay, and where does he work out of, out of the highway department building? And how are we gonna make a decision on how the repair is gonna go through and what it's gonna look like?
That's what we're in the process of doing, I'm not in that business.
Who makes that decision?
Eric and I do.
You and Eric, okay. So I would like to meet out there and discuss the options to get this repaired, and make sure that we have this repaired done by the time the asphalt plants close this year.
That's, I, that's the intent.
Okay. So that intent will be met, and I need to follow up and have dates and, and meetings to make this happen, because I don't wanna go through this, and I don't want to waste.
I don't want you to either, you know, I don't want you to either.
Okay. So I'm left to come to the next meeting and find out what's happened?
No, I, I just told you, I will speak with Eric again tomorrow.
And I'll be getting a call?
We'll get him back in touch with you about when we're gonna meet out there and how we're going to address it.
Here's my cell phone, I'll expect a call in a week, right?
Thank you very much.
We'll get some action, and we shouldn't have to deal with this issue in this fashion.
Yeah, I'm not sure about this issue, other than what you've explained to me in my trips out there to see it, about the scene.
I've signed so many letters, George.
I understand that, I just don't, you know, we, we repaired it once, as far as I know, we moved that seam. That apparently didn't work. So we're gonna try and do it again.
That road is a disaster. I mean, that's not just the scene.
And that's what you, well, that's what it started at, it's the seam.
Can have those too.
We will, I've got these, I think you gave us these last time. We will, we meet out there, we're there, and with you, and we'll go over.
I don't want to have to move because of a road, I can't, I was gonna put a concrete wall up, so maybe we'd do footings, it stops the vibration putting in your house, I could put a wall up.
I don't want you to have to do any of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Given that we have a town meeting coming up immediately following this meeting, I'd like to ask if someone would move to.
Sure.
To table item five until our next, next meeting.
Make a motion to re-table item five of opioid settlement funds discussion until our next regular selectmen's meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Or adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna call this special town meeting to order at eight, seven forty-nine. And thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for your patience to get this meeting started. I'm going to ask for nominations for the town meeting moderator.
I'll nominate Jim Olson, be the moderator.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jimmy, floor is yours.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I will, uh, appoint, uh, for the town clerk's position, Paula Weglars. And, um, unless there is an objection, Paula will be the, the, um, for the representing town clerk, and she will read the call of the meeting.
Legal notice, Town of Deep River, special town meeting Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, immediately following the Board of Selectmen regular meeting in the Richard H. Smith Town Hall. One, to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen's and Board of Finance's regular meeting of July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to approve the purchase of a fully outfitted police vehicle with a purchase price not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars, dated at Deep River, Connecticut, this thirty-first day of August, two thousand twenty-two. Board of Selectmen Angus L. McDonald, Dwayne A. Gates, James Olson.
Um, is there a motion to adopt the call of the meeting?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, yeah, continues?
Motion to approve.
Motion, I'm scared?
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve item one on the call of the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the call of the meeting, on the motion?
What's included, item one?
That's good, um, we'll talk about that. I'll just give you a brief description, and then, um, our resident trooper Steve Krass can speak to the details. Um, we've got a fleet of, of police vehicles. We were very fortunate over, over an extended period, of extended period of time, and I think the town should be eternally grateful to Wayland Engineering for contributing, uh, police vehicles, outfitted police vehicles for our town for many, many years. Um, at this time, Wayland does not have any vehicles, uh, available. Um, they certainly are, are, you know, we have had conversations with them, and when one comes available, they will, they will make it available still. But at this time, we have a need for a police vehicle, as we explained to the Board of Finance a couple of weeks ago. Um, our vehicles are spending, a couple of our vehicles, one in particular is old. I want to suggest it's two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve. Um, and the, the interesting thing to remember about police vehicles, is not so much the miles that they put on, but the hours that are put on the engines. It's kind of, they're running, running an awful lot. Um, so we have one car in particular that is, uh, is in the shop more than it's out of the shop these days, and, uh, we, we need to replace that. Our, our fleet is fairly old, two thousand twelve, and I think, two thousand fifteen coming up after that. We'll discuss that shortly, but the immediate need right now is to place an order for this car, um, as soon as we can, so that we can get it in a time that, that Steve can, um, Steve can explain to us what the timeframe will be with that delivery, so.
Okay. Um, so the vehicle would be purchased through MHQ, they're out in Milltown on Newfield Street. Um, they are an actual Ford dealer. Um, or for the vehicle itself, it's only about thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, but it's all the different equipment that's installed in the vehicle after the fact, that basically doubles the price. Um, there's a lighting package. Uh, let's see, it would be a, a twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor Utility with a gas engine. Um, let's see, so the computer console, um, actually, it would be the exact same outfit as the vehicle that I have parked on Veterans Way, um, except it being black. Um, and it wouldn't say State Police on it. That's, and it's not a hybrid, it's gas-only, that's the only difference. Um, so it does have all the different mounting brackets in there, it has electronics for the, uh, the lights, it has, uh, computer, um, per state statute now, we need to have, uh, body camera installed as well as, uh, forward and rear-facing cameras in the vehicle. Um, so all that is included, and it's, uh, just under sixty-five thousand dollars.
How many vehicles do we have for the police now?
Right now, we have five. Uh, one is a spare vehicle, which is a twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, and that has lights only, so technically, per state statute, we can't use that for police services unless it's just a highway construction job. Um, uh, we do have a twenty-seventeen and a twenty-nineteen Charger as well. Uh, however, those are also showing some issues. So, um, our expenses in, uh, vehicle maintenance is increasing, and this is a way to break that down and, and actually have usable vehicles for our officers.
So one vehicle is not legal, that means we have four vehicles?
We have four that we're using, this one is for traffic. The other, once this is purchased, I intend to, to sell both of those vehicles, so we will have four vehicles, one for, one for each officer.
Seems like an awful lot for Deep River. I mean, I was on the Board of Finance in eighty-eight, eighty-nine, Dick Smith had a big borrow on steel to get two.
Mm-hmm.
And we started with one, and we got two, so, and we ended up with new vehicles after about three years, so.
Well, we have four officers down.
I understand, and that's-
So they don't want to be in one car?
No, that, that's right, and we did, we did talk about that for, um, for a number of, for a, for a while, I've been talking about that with Steve and also with his predecessor. Um, there is, there are many benefits to having the officer have his own car. Um, mostly it comes into, they're working, they're generally, when they get in that car to come to work, they're in their uniform, and they're working as soon as they're in their car. So they're not coming to, to the town garage, picking up the car. Once they're in town, they're in town, and they're working. Um, that's the biggest benefit that I see, I don't know what else you might wanna add to that, but-
So there are some circumstances, such as the muster, Family Day, a bunch of other instances where all the officers are working, and they're all in their cars. Also, we do have an agreement with, uh, the tri-town area where, excuse me, um, for highway construction jobs, we work, uh, to fill jobs in other towns if other towns can't fill them. Um, so they would actually be working when other officers are working in town, or you can actually have all four officers working at the same time, so. And that wouldn't be conducive to having less vehicles.
And when they're, when they're out of town, working on those constructions, that is revenue for the Town of Deep River.
It is.
Yes. So they're not only just working, but they're also generating in, in, income, if you will, for the Town of Deep River, while the Deep River Constable is working on a road project, let's say, in Essex.
Exactly.
And it's not taking one of our cars that's needed in town, because it's his car, and he'll be there. It's not taking away a car from another officer that doesn't have a car, because they're out of town or whatever.
Exactly.
I've, I've mentioned in the past, I think it would be a good idea for any new vehicle that we get, be marked as the Town of Deep River.
Agreed.
Um, I, I believe that it's a comfort to the, the taxpayers when they're driving around, that they can distinguish between our guy and, and a state trooper. And, oh, the State Police have been unmarked forever. Whether they should be or shouldn't, that's another, you know, that's a big, bigger issue. But I think just as, as taxpayers of Deep River, they pay for the cars and pay for the, the, the red, or the constables, that the, the car should be marked. So that it's known that it's not an Essex guy coming through town, or a Chester guy coming, or it's a State Police, differentiate, differentiate between state and local. So it says Town of Deep River, or, or something to that effect on the car. That's my personal opinion.
And mine was, try to match them all as we go forward. We're buying a black, and now I'd like to see, continue with black. Instead of right now, we look like the Misfits.
Right, that's what happens when they're doing it.
No, no, I know, but again, if we're trying to-
But that's that continuity.
If we're gonna start, if we're gonna start purchasing them and put our names on them, I'd like to see a, a, a uniform.
You know, you see some towns like Old Saver, they got all kinds of stuff, and lighthouses and all that kinda stuff, and I don't think we need to do that personally, but I think it'd be a good idea if police, Deep River Police, or whatever, whatever happens to be. And that's not gonna be, I don't think that's a huge expense to, to, to labor the car in a, you know, relatively simple manner.
Okay.
Well, I still, I still think that four vehicles for this town is a bit much, but-
Is there any other discussion on the call of the meeting?
Presently, if you have four vehicles that are being driven, less than sharing two or three, maintenance and replacement will kick in for savings.
Yes, that's the intent.
So they'll last seven years instead of five with constant use, or some of them-
If we, if we had two vehicles and, and four, it, it, those vehicles would be gone almost twenty-four hours a day, not quite.
That's the intent, I mean, we're replacing- We're replacing Pete's old car.
Okay.
Got a lot of that.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? One opposed, the motion carries. Um, make a motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.